30,000 good paying jobs on the table should absolutely be considered and certainly warrants our input and further discussion. As with any project of this magnitude and the scale, we absolutely are looking at it from a very holistic approach. This is not just about economic development, it's also about the environmental impact, investing in our infrastructure, quality of life, public safety, and many of the important priorities that all borough residents consistently talk to us about here at Borough Hall, as well as with elected officials, our community leaders and advocates, members of the local community board. So we believe in this process and certainly any project, any proposal that moves forward in the Bronx must be done so in a responsible way with commitment, with dedication, and certainly with intentionality. For any support, we must ensure that there are certain commitments. We often talk about local hiring opportunities being prioritized, public transportation, investing in our infrastructure, quality of life, making sure that we deal with so many challenges that we face today. The surrounding community of Throggs Neck is a vibrant community today, and we always look for opportunities to make each of our communities even better. MWE commitments, real community benefits, local hiring opportunities are many of the priorities that we consistently talk about as Borough President. And if you look at our past recommendations on ULEP and land use applications, you will see a consistent message when it comes to residential and commercial projects. You will see us talk about local hiring, MWE, job and career pathways. We talk consistently about apprenticeship opportunities. We know that not every young person and young adult has a pathway to college, and we understand that, and that is okay, but they should have a pathway to a career. And we've been very intentional about working with the Bronx Board of Business Agents, many of our labor unions, our trades, many of them have ongoing relationships with a number of our high schools today, and we want to make sure that we continue to invest in that. It's really important for us. We cannot talk about young people engaging in negative behavior if we don't offer them an alternative that gives them real opportunities to be successful. I also want to acknowledge that this site, which is situated on public parkland, also raises many of our important environmental considerations that we have talked consistently about. We are a steward of a borough that is known as the greenest borough in the city of New York. We have Pelham Bay Park. We are the borough with the largest number of parkland, and we appreciate and value our parkland. And so we must ensure that any replacement of parkland truly benefits the public, our children and families, and that sustainability commitments must meet the highest of standard. Standard is important for us, quality of life is important, open space, green space are all important components of our work. I also recognize that this process before us today and the land use applications does not guarantee approval of a casino license. This is a process that must happen regardless of the outcome when the state grants the three casino licenses to the applicants. So let me be extremely clear, my director of planning will say that again, this does not necessitate an approval, this is a part of a process that must happen. This proposal presents both opportunities as well as challenges, and we realize that. Every proposal starts in one place and usually ends in a different place. But the core components of proposals before us that we consider as an administration are basic, they are consistent, and we want to make sure that they are productive. We want local jobs, we want career pathways, we want local hiring opportunities, we want apprenticeship programs, we want to lift up families, we want to improve the quality of life, we want benefits, we want programs, we want recreation, we want retail, we want to make sure that the Bronx benefits from any project that comes before our office. And so I urge everyone this afternoon, as you listen to the applicant before us today, to listen closely at the details of the proposal that is on the table, and certainly before we make our recommendations as an office, there will be other opportunities besides today's hearing where you can give your input, both in writing as well as hopefully email to our office by a certain timeframe. Before I close, I want to acknowledge the team that is at the office of the Bronx Borough President, who works relentlessly with all of our applicants and developers across the borough, whether it's residential, commercial, retail, IBZs, all of the work we do across the borough. It's certainly not possible without our dedicated staff in the planning and development team. I am joined here to my right by our director of the planning and development team, Jitan Hortsman, our deputy director, Kimberly McNabb, our senior planner, Sam Goodman, our senior planner in the topography unit, Jayden Vasquez, our planner, Daniel Donovan, the director of IT who's going to make this remote option successful today, Gio Chaco, our general counsel, Robert Maraglia. And I also want to acknowledge BronxNet who is here and allowing us to make sure that those who are virtual are able to hear and respond. And with that, thank you everyone for being here. It really demonstrates that not only are you interested in what is happening in our borough, but most importantly, you are a part of the conversation. I often say that we are a part of this incredible borough, and each of us has a role to play. Each of us represents something that matters when it comes to our work, our voice, our influence, our power, and all of the work we do across our respective communities. And so no matter whether you live in Throggs Neck, you live in Pelham Bay, you live in Country Club, any other part of our borough, your voice matters, and that is why opportunities like this are given so that you truly have a chance to talk to us and share your concerns and make sure that at the end of these conversations, the decisions that we make are done so with all of your ideas and views in mind respectfully. We may not always agree on every aspect of every proposal, but one thing I make clear to everyone here and everyone virtually, as Borough President, I will always work with stakeholders and our team at Borough Hall to make the very best decision that has the best impact on our entire borough. I am not going to allow the Bronx to lead in everything that is challenging, but rather we're going to lead in everything that is good. The Bronx has a lot of potential and a lot of promise to be better than where we are today, and the only way we get that done is by considering opportunities that we are given. We are not going to leave families behind, we're going to uplift our families in a real way, because guess what? Everyone deserves a pathway to the middle class. Everyone deserves an opportunity to be a homeowner, a business owner, an entrepreneur, and we believe in that. Many have had those opportunities, they have worked really hard, and you're now successful. Everyone should have that path. And for many of our residents and families, that has not always been the case. And I hear that consistently as I travel throughout the borough. So I do want to make sure that any proposal before our office is met with all of the understanding, the responsibility, and the balanced approach that it absolutely deserves so that we can get to a place where we can have commonality and we can realize that most importantly, our priorities align together. So with that, thank you for joining us in person, thank you for joining us online, thank you to the Bally's team who is here and will be introduced. I now turn our hearing back over to our director of planning and development, Jitan Hortsman. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you Borough, thank you Borough President. So before we begin, I just want you all to take a moment to appreciate the space that we're in and where we're sitting today. I want to thank the administrative judge, Joseph Capella, and the Bronx Prim Court for hosting us in this beautiful courtroom. We also have the finest court officers in New York State with us today. We are especially grateful for their service and assistance. All attendees of today's hearing, whether in person or remote, will conduct themselves with professionalism and respect. This includes refraining from disruptive behavior, speaking only when recognized, and treating everyone, whether speakers or fellow attendees, with courtesy. I want to recognize Robert Maraglia there on the side, and the court officers who will address any issues as needed. Please be mindful of our venue as courtroom decorum will be strictly enforced. Your cooperation ensures a fair and orderly process for all. So I now want to go over the run of show and set the ground rules and format for the public hearing. Gio, can you go back to the first slide, which will also be on the screen in a second? So for the public hearing, the applicant will make an initial presentation. The Borough President's team will then ask questions to the applicant team. Any elected officials that are present may then offer testimony. Statements from the general public will then begin with a two-minute time limit which will be enforced. The applicant team will not respond to questions after individual speakers. The speakers will be both in person and virtual, with in-person speakers going first. To speak in person, you'll need to fill out a speaker card available at the sign-in table when you first arrived. To speak virtually, you will need to use the raise hand function which will put you in the queue. You can raise your hand at any time, including now, but if you lower it, you will be reset in the queue. If you are on a phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself, which will also be noted when we get to the public testimony portion. Please only unmute yourself if you have been recognized to speak. Speakers may only speak once. We ask there are no interruptions from the audience during the public testimony and that each person's opinions are respected. We will ask people to leave if they are disruptive during the public hearing. This includes written comments in the chat or any disrespectful statements. This is a public hearing that is being recorded. For any written testimony, please submit it to thepublictestimony@bronxbp.nyc.gov. And any testimony will, written testimony will always be accepted, but only testimony received by Tuesday, April 15th will be considered for the Borough President's recommendation. So before I turn it over to Sam Goodman, I want to remind everyone that we are here to discuss the land use actions that may allow for a casino to be located in this location. This ULEP process is one step of many and is not the deciding factor for approving a casino at this location, which is tied to the state process. If the casino is not selected for this location, the site will remain as it is today as these ULEP actions are tied to the casino approval. I will now turn it over to Sam to go over the docket and who will be keeping time.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sam Goodman. I am the ULEP coordinator for Bronx Borough President Vanessa L. Gibson, and I'd like to welcome you here today. Application number C-250085MMX, Bally's Ferry Point map amendment, a city map amendment in the matter of an application submitted by Bally's New York Operating Company LLC and the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation pursuant to sections 197(c) and 199 of the New York City Charter for an amendment to the city map involving, one, the establishment of Ring Road, and, two, the elimination of parks south of Schley Avenue, and, three, the adjustment of grades and block dimensions necessitated thereby, including authorization for any acquisition or disposition of real property related thereto in accordance with map number 13154. The second application associated with this matter is C-250086ZMX in the matter of an application submitted by Bally's New York Operating Company LLC pursuant to sections 197(c) and 201 of the New York City Charter for an amendment of the zoning map, section number 7a, by establishing a C-84 district on property bounded by a line 2,870 feet northwesterly of the US Pierhead and Bulkhead Line, a line 950 feet southwesterly of Emerson Avenue, a line 1,390 feet northwesterly of the US Pierhead and Bulkhead Line, a line 2,250 feet southwesterly of Emerson Avenue and its southeastern prolongation and the easterly street line of Ring Road. Finally, the third application, 250093PPX in the matter of an application submitted by the Department of Citywide Administrative Services pursuant to section 197(c) of the New York City Charter for the disposition of property located at Ferry Point Park, Block 5622, part of Lot 1, for a non-exclusive access easement over a waterfront access roadway. All actions are in the borough of the Bronx, Community District 10. The full application can be accessed from the zoning application portal. I now turn the hearing over to Jitan and to our applicant who will make the presentation.
Yeah, so the Bally's team can now introduce themselves and begin their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, team. First off, my name is Christopher Jewitt. I'm the Senior Vice President of Corporate Development for Bally's. My primary job responsibilities are oversight of business development for the company. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Borough President, her office, her team, and our team as well. You know, what you're going to see on the screen here today is a couple of years of work to get to this point, and we are still in the very early stages of a very complex and large investment or an economic engine that we're proposing for the Bronx. We've obviously made a very large bet on the Bronx by taking over the golf course with much grander views of putting an integrated resort essentially on the parking lot where that golf course sits today. With that being said, I'm going to jump into the presentation. A few slides, and just to cover the agenda, first and foremost, I'll talk about the facility itself, some of the amenities, give a look at some of the views and renderings. Second section, I'll talk a little bit about the required actions and approvals as we're working through our ULEP. Third section, really the meat and heart of some of the benefits that we're bringing in terms of the transportation and infrastructure improvements. And then third, or fourth, I should say, our community benefits agreement. So to start off, we view this as an economic engine for the Bronx. First and foremost, this would be the largest privately funded project in Bronx history. We're in the three and a half to four billion dollar total investment. Upfront, just an application alone and license is 500 million that is payable upon awarding of a license. So this is a massive investment. First and foremost, you know, employment is probably the biggest benefit, and our focus is going to be on the Bronx. With that being said, we're estimating about 15,000 construction jobs over about a 30 to 36-month period, and 4,000 permanent jobs that will all be, you know, competitive in pricing, and all of these jobs, all 19,000 or so, will essentially be fully unionized. At this point, we've already signed a neutrality agreement with the Hotel and Gaming Trades Council and are working through a project labor agreement for the construction aspect of the project. A couple of things to note, upon opening, we would essentially be, become the second largest private employer in the Bronx behind Montefiore, and our average wage among those 4,000 jobs is estimated to be about $81,000. To put that into context and into perspective, I think it's important that that's more than three times the current average wage of a single Bronx resident today. So very impactful, life-changing opportunities, and these aren't just jobs, these are careers. You know, folks that start in the unions, and I see there are some union reps in the room today, you start in the union and you grow, you progress. Over and above employment opportunities, a bunch of other things that we'll talk about here in the presentation. Number one, the community benefits agreement. So a couple of weeks ago, we formally announced a portion of the project that we've been working on for months, which are really the benefits over and above the employment and construction and the things that we're bringing up front, which incorporate significant transportation upgrades north of $100 million, new parkland improvements and new parkland to replace the land that we're looking to acquire, which is another $100 million, and then we're also committing to build at least one police substation within our project and potentially others throughout the borough, as well as additional funding for additional officers, which we'll cover in a bit. Can you go to the next slide? Is... No.
Page five?
Yep. Okay, so a little bit about the site for those that aren't familiar. So as of today, we operate the golf course, which is outlined in red on the screen. It's about a 222-acre portion of Ferry Point Park. A couple of things to note here, it's an ideal site for a project or an integrated resort for a few reasons. When you go and look at a site for an integrated resort, you really want good highway access, visibility, and quite frankly, you don't want to be in anyone's backyard. So we're right off the, right off the hutch at the foot of the Whitestone Bridge, and we're building on a parking lot that quite frankly is surrounded by a golf course, which is land that used to, used to be a landfill, and it was converted to a golf course after many, many years of effort by the city and city parks. There's no direct access from the neighborhood, you can really only get to us from the Ring Road and from the highway, so we think that's a huge benefit. Additionally, you know, this is about a 15.7-acre portion of the site that we're utilizing. Ferry Point Park is about 413 acres, and again, that 15.7 acres is materially made up of mostly parking lot. There's also a clubhouse which we would be replacing upon being successful and building an integrated resort, as well as new parking where that parking lot exists. So today, there's roughly 300 parking spaces on the surface. We'll have 4,600 parking spaces within our structure, which will be providing a permanent easement to New York City Parks in perpetuity, so the clubhouse will always have access to those. So I'm going to go through a few renderings so you can get a feel for some of the views. So this view is looking due west, you can see the Manhattan skyline up the sound or the East River and Westchester Creek. This view is your, you know, sunset cruise view. A few things to point out in this. Number one, we've gone through many, many iterations of the design of the building. This is what's resulted after about 18 months or so, a lot of engagement, especially with our local community, our local neighborhoods, organizations, et cetera. And a lot of the feedback that we heard right out of the gate was, we don't want this tall skyscraper, this large structure. So incorporating that, our zoning in this site, based on where it sits approximate to LaGuardia, we can build upwards of, to the peak of the Whitestone Bridge, which is approximately 400 or so feet. The top of the building that you see on the screen is approximately 250 feet, so we try to keep it as low-hung as possible at the peak, so the peak of the building is actually the hotel, and then off to the right or to the east, that's actually the parking structure with the resort on the bottom level. With that being said, this would be the view that you would see coming over the Whitestone Bridge as, as you're on the hutch. So I mentioned 500-room hotel, you'll have Skyview Suites, you'll be able to see the Manhattan skyline with a rooftop bar and restaurant. There's two parking structures that make up the 4,600 parking spaces, those are designated easily in the design, you can see there's a wood-clad paneling with ivy and green roofs. You'll see in the top right corner or in the northeast, there's a 2,000-person mixed-use event center. This will give us the opportunity to hold not only, you know, concerts, comedic acts, graduations, et cetera, but also bring in, you know, group business to do conventions. As we know throughout our research and through the various conversations we've had over the last couple of years, there's really a lack of, one, good hotel product, and, two, you have to leave the borough to have any sort of meeting of size and scale. In addition, we'll also have a spa and meeting space within the hotel, about 30,000-square-foot spa, and then that entire ground level, just north of 200,000 square feet, is gaming space as well as food and beverage. So we'll have 10 food and beverage offerings, and those range everywhere from coffee shop up to your traditional steakhouse, food hall, Asian cuisine, and everything in between. So I mentioned, you know, it was important to not have the building be extremely tall and highly visible, particularly from the Throggs Neck neighborhood. I know it's hard to see, but if you zoom in on the screen, this is the same picture taken looking due west on Harding Avenue, essentially looking directly at the Whitestone Bridge and the golf course. This picture was taken in the fall of 2023. As you could see, there's no leaves on the trees, and what we did is we rendered, the same picture on the bottom, we rendered what our building would look like if it existed back in 2023. And you can see that only a handful of floors at the time, you would have been able to see from the street level or street view in that neighborhood. Now note that our project, based on the current timeline of approvals, construction, et cetera, it's not expected to open until, call it, 2029 or 2030. That vegetation would have an additional six-plus years of growth, so really you won't be able to see anything from the neighborhood. So moving to the proposed actions and approvals, so we are in the middle of our ULEP process. We were certified in, in January. Our draft environmental impact statement was filed January 21st, and we continue to work on finalizing that with all of the reviewing agencies that you can see on the right-hand side. In addition to the ULEP, we have to submit our gaming license application on June 27th. That would, will require us to be further along in our ULEP process, but also to have alienation legislation passed at the state level, which was mentioned. That was introduced in the last couple of weeks at the state level, so we're working through that. We are also engaged with New York City Parks to modify our existing concession license agreement, which is what allows us to operate the golf course today, working with the State Department of Environmental Conservation on updating the work plan, which will allow construction on the site. And I think it's important to note that on the site itself or construction, we're really not disrupting any of the, the former landfill. Our goal is to be as least disruptive, not only to the golf course, but just to the site itself, and we'll be drilling piles directly into the ground and building on a platform. We're not coming in and excavating out, you know, thousands of tons of material. Additionally, we've been working for the last 18 months or so with New York City and New York State Departments of Transportation on the various approvals for the roadways and the flyover or the overpass that we've been, that's been talked about, and you'll see here in just a moment. So moving on to transportation and infrastructure improvements. So for those that have never been to this site, I think, a few things I do want to point out. Originally, this site, you know, it essentially sits in parkland. The roadway which is highlighted on the screen in orange, that is essentially parkland today, technically parkland today. It was never built as a city road, it was never built, quite frankly, to handle what is going in and out of there today. And what do I mean by that? So in 2015, city planning commenced a study, commissioned a study to really understand, you know, the commercial development that's happened near this site, and ultimately came to the conclusion that there are significant infrastructure improvements needed with or without our project, right? This project was never even a thought back in 2015. So with that being said, we are committed to paying for all of these improvements, and then some upfront in advance of our project opening if we are successful. So to walk through each of those improvements, starting off, that roadway, it's, it's very narrow, if you've been through there, especially during the summertime when it's very busy, it's maybe about 20 feet wide. The roadway will be improved to somewhere between 35 and 45 feet wide, depending on where you're at on the roadway. Today, that roadway floods, especially when there's any sort of significant rain in the spring and fall. It's a life safety issue as it exists for us today as a, an operating concessionaire, so we will be putting in the appropriate infrastructure and tying into the stormwater so that that roadway will not intentionally flood and it can be utilized 24/7. Additionally, the roadway improvements will be brought up to DOT standards, which will include two full moving lanes, a parking lane in most areas, a bike lane, 10-foot-wide sidewalk, fire hydrants, light fixtures, and safer pedestrian crossings. Last note on this page, I think it's important, today there's no pedestrian access underneath the Whitestone Bridge, and there's really no connection from east to west. So that entire roadway will have sidewalk and bike path on that orange pathway that you see, so really creating a much safer pedestrian or bike connection throughout the So we've got a couple of renderings just so you can visualize what the roadway would look like. So today, this is a view as though you were looking southwest, I guess, essentially right where the EDC parking lot is for the park and ride for the ferry. You can see the roadway is much wider, much improved. You can see the roadway is much wider, much improved, new vegetation, sidewalks and bike lanes and a safe pedestrian crossing. This would be if you continued to go south and we're about ready to wrap underneath the Whitestone Bridge. As you get under the Whitestone Bridge, the roadway actually, we remove and working with DOT, we remove the parking under there. There's just not enough width, but you still have pedestrian access and still two full moving lanes. And then the second aspect to the transportation improvements is a new overpass up to the north of our site, just to the south of Lafayette Avenue. That overpass or flyover would connect the Ring Road or the access road, service road from east to west, and I've got a better view here in just a moment, whereby drivers who would essentially have to stop at Lafayette and make two lefts to go back south will never have to. They'll literally yield over our overpass. In addition, we've worked closely with DOT and have identified, based on our studies, a handful or so of traffic signals that will need to be retimed to keep up with these changes. And then there's two areas that are lightly highlighted in orange, one up on Lafayette, just across from the cemetery, the other along Ring Road, right where the bus depot is. We would remove about 25 street parking spaces in order to alleviate a current bottleneck situation whereby you go from two moving lanes to one. So this is the rendered view of the overpass. You know, as you can see, we'd also make some improvements along Lafayette. I believe that roadway would, you'd end up having two full turning lanes. There would be a light at the overpass, which would allow a smooth traffic flow. And there would be a dedicated, essentially a yield lane that would feed the overpass itself. So on to our community benefits agreement. So as of a few weeks ago, we formally announced a $625 million commitment for community benefits. A few things that play into that. Number one, the transportation improvements. Number two, our parkland improvements, and I'll get into a couple of the renderings in just a moment. So the alienation works in a very simplistic, I'm going to try and simplify it. Essentially, the city will take a fair market value of what the proposed zoning of our use would be, which is a C84. Ultimately, there's an independent valuation that equates to what is the fair market value of that 15.7 or so acres. We ultimately have to provide the equivalent in parkland replacement, new parkland, or parkland improvements. And our plan is to do both. We've got a couple of options on land whereby we can buy them, acquire them, and then dedicate them back to city parks with improvements on them. And then we are planning on making significant improvements with the balance, starting with Ferry Point Park. So there's a few examples here illustrated in renderings. We know today that the soccer and cricket fields on that site definitely need some work. There's a shortage of restrooms. Some of the pathways need to be redone. We've actually heard from various stakeholders that there's a request to have an actual pedestrian path along the water, a little bit further from where the roadway was, so you could connect the east and west paths. So those are all types of projects that are in consideration today as part of that package that we would handle upfront. We'll also be building a new clubhouse. We've been working with New York City Parks and ultimately have to go through a formal approval process with the PDC or the Public Design Commission. We are in the interim stages, but you can see a few renderings of what that new clubhouse would look like. For those that have been to the site and are familiar, or those have driven by it, quite frankly, essentially the club, the new clubhouse would go right where that Bally Link sign is, that you can see from the Whitestone. So additionally, things that I didn't mention on the CBA that we'll be providing. Number one is an annual Bronx benefit fund that we've committed to spend a minimum of $10 million a year. Our proposal includes the opportunity for our local electeds to form a board, whereby that board would ultimately decide on how that, those annual dollars are spent. Secondly, we are proposing a community investment program for a portion of the project whereby local Bronx residents can actually buy equity in the project itself and own a portion of the integrated resort, whereby we as a company would give leverage or allow some of the backing for folks to buy shares in the company. And then lastly, you know, we are committed to local hiring, workforce development opportunities, et cetera, and working closely with our union partners. With that being said, I think, I think everyone, I'm going to turn it over to our chairman, Sue Kim, to close us out.
Thank you, Chris. Let's see, I lost my voice, so I'm going to try my best. I'm really sorry about this. So I grew up not that far from here, actually. I've lived in Bayside and Whitestone. And so I know that this used to be actually a recovered waterfront, then landfill. Now it's a parking lot. And the possibility that a parking lot will become a more than $3 billion economic engine for the entire county, for the county borough is pretty remarkable. I know that we've talked a lot about traffic, park, and public safety, because these are the very much the back, you know, the kitchen table issues that people care about. Just a couple of things to point out, because I think there's some misunderstandings here or misconceptions. The bridge next to us carries more than 40 million cars a year. The bridge, you know, Throggs Neck also carries more than 40 million cars a year. All of the ingress and ingress to the site is off the highway. So there's no interaction with any of the neighbors or the neighboring neighbors. The reality is our neighbors are a 200 acre golf course and a cemetery. So the actual build is on the parking lot alongside the highway. All of these traffic improvements are designed to get people in and out and so that we could zip off the 40 million plus cars that are coming by. We need to give an opportunity for people not to just drive by the Bronx, but actually spend time here and invest their hard earned money to help drive economic activity. When it comes to parkland, we're not taking away any park. We're actually enhancing the park that currently exists today that you can only get to southbound and also you can't actually bike or walk to. So we're actually increasing access to public spaces. We're enhancing it. And then finally, in terms of public safety, the commitments we've made to public safety will only radiate a greater envelope of safety beyond the casino, just for what it's worth. A casino is probably the worst place to do any kind of malfeasance. It just is what it is. Let me point out a couple of things. The first thing is that when we host an event at the golf course, does anyone realize there's even a golf course there? We had one person that understands when we have hosted events. The reality is it's already a public space. It already takes traffic in and out, and it doesn't impact the neighboring community. But what I will say is the impact to the borough is ginormous. This will be the largest project, private project. And the second largest got a lot of public funds. So this is way, this is all privately funded. What this allows, let me tell you, a casino is happening. Casinos are happening in downstate. The state passed a law, actually something like eight or nine years ago, to eventually allow for three licenses to come downstate. And that means Westchester, the five boroughs, Suffolk and Nassau. The only question here is New York City should want all of them. Because the reality is if the casino gets cited in Westchester or in Nassau, the tax revenues go there. Why don't we want those revenues right here? And I'll tell you, I am a lifelong New York City taxpayer. In my entire adult life, I've paid taxes here. And I'll tell you one thing, I would rather prefer all those revenues, the jobs, the indirect benefits, the restaurants, hotels, the spas, stay right here in our borough, in our city. I mean, it's not even close. So we've been super mindful about what the impact will be to our actual neighbors, beyond the cemetery, by the way. And we've been very, and we've just been listening very carefully and trying to, as you see, very mindfully and carefully leave no impact. But the reality is this, this project is way larger than one community in the Bronx. This will impact the entire borough and it'll impact the entire city. The one thing I'll just say is obviously we talked about, so the reality is half of our 600 million plus announced benefits are traffic, park, public safety. But the other half comes to engaging the entire borough behind us, all the nonprofits, all of the community organizations, all the investment that this Bronx borough needs. The reality is, is for a long time, this borough is the borough with the highest need. And this project will make a difference. The last thing I'll just say is that the most interesting statistic is Bronx residents of the five boroughs, they spend their retail dollars out of the Bronx, because there aren't enough stores here and restaurants to even spend your money. That's ridiculous. So instead of having all these tens of millions of cars just driving right on through, why don't we give them something to stop and linger and enjoy this most amazing borough? Now, I grew up in Queens, so I'm a little biased. I'm actually really excited about the Bronx, it's way cooler. Anyway. Thank you, thank you. I'm so sorry about my voice. This actually has never happened. The last part is the 600 million plus community benefits, the 4,000 actual living wage jobs. Forget about all the impact of the restaurants and the businesses and all the suppliers and all the indirect benefits that could come from a site. The other thing that we share is that we have the ability, we're the only ones doing it, that allows local residents to actually chip in a few hundred dollars and buy a piece of the property. In Chicago, we already have more than 3,000 actual local people sign up and say, hey, we want a piece of that casino. And we did that very strategically, because, look, we won a very competitive process, RFP process, to build what is actually the only casino in the third largest city in America. And we beat everyone to that. And one of the reasons why we were able to do that is we were offering more. And we were the only ones that came up with this, again, creative way that it's not that we were winning for ourselves, we're winning for the community. And this project is the same thing. This is an opportunity for the Bronx to be heard, to stand up. And by the way, I'm, you know, we actually appreciate, even though there's going to be, not every community, not every meeting is going to want everything about this project. We actually appreciate all of the input, because it allows us to shape our bid to address their concerns. What we don't want is indifference, is people not caring. Because I'm going to tell you, this is an amazing opportunity. Everyone should stand up and we should fight, you know, not for Bally's, but for the Bronx. And we are here to deliver that for you. I hope you, I hope that was clear. Thank you very much for. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, thank you. So we're actually going to flip the order just a little bit. We're going to have the public testimony first and then we're going to do the fourth person Q and A. So what we're going to do is we're going to call up four speakers who will be sitting at the front. First will be Eddie, always apologies for all the names at that time. Marin.
Marrero.
Marrero. I'll just, if you want to join the front. Paul De Silva. Marquez Payne and Laura Barrera are the first four speakers. The next four speakers are James Gregg, Lina Jones, Stephen Hayes, and Dion. We'll call you up after this. So we have a timer. It's going to be again, two minutes for speakers. Give us one second. You can go ahead and begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Eddie Marrero. I'm a local resident in the district. Today, we stand at the crossroads of opportunity and transformation. The Bally's Casino Project isn't just another development, it's a game changer. At a time when families are struggling with rising costs and uncertainty, this project is our shot at real economic revival and long term prosperity. This is about economic growth and job creation. Picture this, thousands of well paying jobs, construction workers, hospitality professionals, entertainers, and retail workers. This project will fuel careers and financial security for generations. But that's not all. Bally's will pump millions into our local economy, funding schools, infrastructure, and essential services that keep our city thriving. This is a community investment. This isn't just about a casino. It's about empowering our communities. Bally's is committed to investing in education, affordable housing, and recreation. That means funding for local schools, after school programs, and job training. This project ensures that the Bronx doesn't just grow, it thrives. This is about sustainability and environmental responsibility, a waterfront project done right. Bally's is bringing the state of the art flood protection, green building technology, and eco-friendly infrastructure to our borough. That means a healthier environment, stronger climate resilience, and enhanced public spaces that benefit all of us. We know residents are worried about traffic and what this means for property values. There are solutions. Bally's will work with city leaders to implement transportation improvements that keep traffic flowing smoothly. And for homeowners, studies show that projects like this actually increase property values, boosting wealth for local families and businesses alike. This is our moment. We cannot let fear stand in our way. Supporting Bally means yay, saying yes to jobs, yes to investments, yes to a stronger Bronx. Let's reject the fear, reject the doubt, and embrace a future where the Bronx leads the way in economic opportunity and smart development. Let's get this done. The Bronx deserves it, New York City needs it, and together we'll make it happen. Thank you.
Next is.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul De Silva from the New York City District Council of Carpenters. I am speaking on behalf of almost 20,000 members who depend on competitive wages and safety precautions to support their families and make a living. This proposed development would create 15,000 construction jobs, exactly the kind of work that would provide the carpenters with stable, good paying jobs that they could rely on. This plan, however, not only promises economic benefits to the union members, but for also the residents of the East Bronx and the Bronx as a whole. The plan gives the Bronx residents, including a significant number of carpenters who live in the Bronx, the opportunity to invest in the casino. Residents will likely own up to 10% with the investments as little as $250, a significant opportunity for financial growth and long term fiscal stability. Bally's has already started offering a free 20 passenger wheelchair accessible shuttle bus that transports passengers between Ferry Point Park and Westchester Square, connecting them to key business activity in the neighborhood. If approved, Bally's also has promised at least 1% of the gross casino revenues to community benefit programs, $10 million a year, over $100 million over 10 years. That includes funding for much needed community housing, nitrogen development, local schools, youth programming, and more. This plan will also provide significant quality of life benefits for Bronx residents. Bally's has pledged to widen the road near the casino and upgrade storm prevention measures. They have also promised to construct new overpasses on Lafayette Avenue and several MTA bus stops. Further, Bally's has committed to creating an NYPD substation at the casino location, ensuring public safety in the area and combating any possible disruptions. Bally's has demonstrated a commitment to ensuring this development benefits not only their interests, but also the community's interests. It will create good paying jobs, force a community enrichment, and work to build a stronger, better Bronx. For the carpenters and the Bronx as a whole, I hope you will support the construction of this hotel casino at Ferry Point. Not only construction jobs will be provided, and college is not for everyone. And you mentioned the pathway to the middle class, right? So college and construction is not for everybody. 4,000 well paying jobs can transform the Bronx's future. And I have a letter of endorsement from our EST Paul Capurso for Bronx Borough President Gibson here.
Next speaker is Marquez.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you for convening this. I think this is a wonderful meeting and gives the community a chance to have some footback. I'm a huge supporter of this project. I think the $110 million for the community development and going into community groups, I think that's something that we should celebrate. I think it's good for the Bronx to have a lot. ways of both the Greenland, Parkland area, as well as be able to benefit community groups and to have elected officials to be able to create a board and see where this new kinda $170 million fund goes to and how it benefits the community, I think that's a really big thing. And I think we should be welcoming things that help our borough grow and blossom. So just thank you and I think this is a great opportunity to speak about it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Laura.
Hi. So my name is Laura Guerriero and I'm speaking today not as the publisher of The Bronx Times Reporter, but as a lifelong resident of the Throgs Neck Country Club community, and yes, someone who does love to visit casinos. Several residents have brought up concerns about drugs and prostitution and crimes associated with casinos. And this may be true in Atlantic City and Vegas, but in the neighborhoods where there's only one single casino, like Mohican Sun or Rivers, there's no crime or prostitution or drugs. These casinos are family-friendly, with many attached to golf courses, arcades, water parks. I've, I've even watched the, the video taken of the Chicago Bally's and there's no traffic. You know, not everybody visits a casino at the same time. There's no loitering, I didn't see any loitering or drugs or prostitution. So I was raised in a union household and I was lucky enough to raise my family in a union household. Union jobs such as Bally's would offer affords middle-class workers the ability to provide for their families. You know, many of us have good jobs and are somewhat at retirement age. We don't necessarily need these union jobs, but our children and our grandchildren need them. Our community cannot stay middle-class without these types of jobs. Are we going to mimic the mistakes made in Queens which killed the thousands of Amazon jobs? I hope not. Mr. Kim and the Bally's organization has listened to the community's concerns and has made the recommended changes, not to mention their willingness to save Preston High School. I vote yes to the Bally's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you for your testimony. The next four speakers that are gonna be on are James Gray, Lenita Jones, Stephen Baines, and Deanna Penn. After them, the next four will be Steve Cologne, Joyce Diggs, apologies on the name, but Jordan, last name is Jordan, and Theresa Hartnett. Apologies again for names. James, you can begin when you're ready.
Hello, my name is James Gray and I'm the president of the ArchaJustice Bronx Chapter. And I'd like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to speak. The Bally's project, I think, is gonna be a real progressive step in the right direction. With property taxes rising and rent rising, I think we need to balance the scales and create more jobs and opportunities for people to pay higher wage and high salary. The ArchaJustice Bronx Chapter is an organization that fights for the people, provides resources. And one of the things that we do is we pattern ourselves in the vein of Martin Luther King and his progressive thinking. And Martin Luther King's last struggle was the economic struggle. One of the things that is really hitting the Bronx right now and Bronx residents is inability to find adequate jobs and resources to pay rent, to pay for family eating and even basic necessities. I think that any opportunity that we can find to create jobs here in the Bronx, we should take full advantage of that. I mean, don't get me wrong, I know there's people dealing with gambling issues, we have resources for that, but a lot of the issues that are being raised here, I don't think would really affect this project. And I think it'll be a great progressive movement if we can create more jobs under any circumstances, specifically, union opportunities. You know, this is a big thing. These guys are willing to even pay for the police force that, that's gonna be involved with this equation too. You know, there's a lot of elements in this equation that I think are favorable. I think the, those far outweigh the latter. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next speaker is Deanna.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Bronx Borough President Vanessa Gibson for allowing us to have this forum here. Mr. Kim, I thank you so much for what you're doing. So my name is Lenita Jones, I'm the district leader of the 79th Assembly. I'm here today to express my support for the proposed development at Bally's Link as a concerned citizen, resident, and the district leader of the Bronx. I believe this project will bring numerous benefits to our community. The proposed casino hotels and bars would create a significant numbers of jobs for our residents, both during the construction phase and in the long term. This will provide a much-needed boost for local economics and help reduce unemployment, rates, in fact, similar development in other cities have shown that the casinos and hotels have created hundreds of jobs in various fields, from hospitality to management. Some of the benefits of this project includes job creation, hundreds of jobs in hospitality, management, and other fields. Economic growth, a significant boost to local economics through tourism, tourism and investments. Increased revenue, higher revenue for local businesses and government through taxes and partnerships. However, I also understand that there may be some concerns about the, the potential impact of such development on our community. I would like to assure you that these concerns are valued and that should be carefully considered. To address these concerns, I propose that the developments work closely with the local stakeholders to ensure that the project benefits our, our community in, in responsibility and stability's ways. This includes, this can include community engagements, regular meetings and updates with local residents and business owners, environmental impact and assessments, and thorough assessments of potential environment impact of the development. Job training programs, training programs for local residents to prepare them for jobs and the new development. In conclusion, I believe that the proposed development for Bally's Link has the potential to bring significant benefits to our community. I urge the developments and local authorities to work together and ensure that this project is implemented in responsibilities and sustainable ways. Thank you. I'm sorry, I was a little bit nervous. I wasn't expecting to speak, but.
Thank you for your.
You're welcome.
Stephen.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stefan Baines. I'm CEO of The Young Executive and I am in support of anything that can bring any type of improvement in the infrastructure and many of the issues. This is a phenomenal opportunity to bring something that can advance the Bronx and move us a step forward. When we think about where we can go to seek entertainment and to seek community and just have a great time, there is no place like that that has been consistent. And right now, this is an opportunity that can move tidal waves throughout New York City. We need as much tourism and as much opportunity for business in the Bronx, New York. However, I do believe that we should commit more than 1% of the gross revenues and more than 10%, 10% annually. The reason why I say that is because the Bronx does struggle with its infrastructure. We don't have the, the basic casual infrastructure issues. So if this project is willing to commit to community and bring people to the table and figure out ways where not we could just sustain things, but be and, and have and advance community and, and have infrastructure improvements, fixing things like our potholes, using the same funds with this business to actually give back in ways where we protect our infrastructure and we communicate that to the community of these plans. What are the infrastructure plans we have in place to keep things clean, to keep rats, rodents away, not just for one year, five years, or for 10 years, to keep things looking fresh, looking new, and to keep things safe? I think that is going to be what's going to draw people into projects like this. My proposal is to offer family-friendly community zones. And I know you guys have a casino and other things, but what parks are going to be included in this for people to come visit? What other projects, centers, air multi-fac, multi-facility centers that are gonna be here where people who don't wanna go to the casino, what do we have to offer to families? Of course, we know restaurants, but what rock climbing areas are there? What ice skating rinks are there? Bowling, rollerblading? I know we have a few out through the Bronx, but if we can find a way to make a high-tech place where it stays clean, protected, and safe, and also provide jobs, not just to people who are in the corporate field, but to people who are everyday people who have the opportunity, I think this would be a perfect opportunity to propose that and show and communicate how you're gonna want to do that moving forward and, and, and in support of it.
Thank you for your testimony. Deanna?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Deanna Penn and I am representing the NABET, National Association of Black Veterans, Bronx Chapter 0029, as well as the Children Veteran Memorial Society. We know that this works. I'm not gonna waste your time saying that I support that. My question is, as someone who's served in Iraq after 9/11, what are you doing for the veteran community? Because the veteran community is in support of the Bronx, without a question, but what are you doing for us? Are there any veteran-focused initiatives that Bally's has? Are there any success stories that Bally's has? Do you offer any types of tuition assistance, mentorship development, things of that nature, things that will continue to build this community as, as, as leaders that we are, veterans? I wanna thank you all for your support and, and for, for holding this hearing and please keep us in mind when you're, when you're, when you're building. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna call again. Stephen Cologne, Joyce Diggs, apologies on the first name, but Jordan is the last name. And Theresa Harvey are the next four to come up, please. People who are online or virtual, you can put your hands up to enter the queue. And then the next four after this panel will be Roxanne Delgado, Dara Ilowski, Michael Maxx, and Bee Wilson. Stephen, you can begin whenever you're ready.
My name is Stephen Cologne. I'm representing NABET and Veteran Action Now. First, I wanna thank our, our beautiful, um, borough president for giving us this opportunity and Mr. Kim for coming here. I had a lot of questions. Most of them were answered and I'm, I'm very impressed with the answers I heard today. One of the things I would like to know is, what exceptions would be given to veterans as far as for training, you know, job placement in there? Because as a veteran, around Veterans Day and Memorial Day, everybody said, oh, thank you for your service, thank you for your service. But I wasn't a veteran two days a year. You know, I'm a combat veteran, I served my country, and I came back and two days a year, we're given all these different things. Go eat a free meal, go do this, march in a parade. The rest of the year, we're not thought about a lot of times. And, um, and what guarantee would the, would the people in the Bronx have, once ground is broken and Bally's is built? That order, you said a lot of great things that was very impressive as far as helping the community, the money to be given back. But Barclays said and Brooklyn said the same thing. But then once they opened up, things changed. A lot of mom-and-pop stores, a lot of businesses were, were gone. And they put in all these other big restaurants and everything, you know, around here. I live in Brooklyn, but I do a lot of advocacy in the Bronx. So you know, I, wherever veterans are, I'm there to support. You know, that's why I came to ask you that. And I had a lot of questions, but a lot of them were answered, you know, thanks to the fine presentation you did. And again, is, is Bally's committed to having, like, a summit or something with veterans? Like we do in City Field, they have a veterans summit every year where they invite veterans there. You know, they show us around, give us a tour of, you know, City Field. And they're doing a lot of things to help build veterans, you know, help them out as they came home after they served their country, right? And lastly, um, are they, are they gonna be, like I said, jobs included for veterans specifically, you know, a certain percentage? You know, we're not asking that you have veterans all in, you know, for the whole staff, but give them a break too. You know, a lot of us, when we come home from the service, you know, I was, I was in infantry. Basically, when I came home, the only job I was really trained for, police officer or, you know, bodyguard or something. You know, do you have training programs for us?
Thank you for your testimony. Joyce Diggs.
Good afternoon. As you know, the Bronx is one of the poorest communities in the five boroughs. And my biggest concern is when you have, as of now, you would have to travel to Westchester, Long Island, or somewhere, or Atlantic City to gamble. If we have a casino right here in the Bronx within walking, driving, or busing distance, my big, pardon me, my biggest concern is that this would disadvantage people with gambling addictions. And what is Bally's doing to address that, you know, or is the city doing to address and be aware of people with gambling who are susceptible to casinos and gambling?
Thank you for your testimony. Jordan?
Hello, can you?
Yes.
All right. First, I'd like to thank Vanessa Gibson for sending this forum up for us to speak. I'm definitely in favor of the project. I've been a resident of the Bronx since the bicentennial. So I've seen a lot of the negative, like the crack here and everything like that. And I think that, now I think I know that this project will be a positive project. We're bringing, what is it, I think 15,000 jobs, construction jobs, where I think it's gonna have another 35,000 or 4,000 jobs, permanent jobs, union jobs. And the Bronx is very much in need of that. You know, we are, and I hate to say it, but out of the five boroughs, we're not looking good. And I think this can definitely help us, you know, tremendously. The construction, the, the new police department, the police outlet that they're gonna have there, and they're gonna pay for it as well, so that, that shows that they're looking to actually help us. Me, I'm, I'm the president of a nonprofit, Strong Enough Achievers Foundation. I know that they said that we're gonna help, you know, people like myself who are, are in the streets and helping the community, you know, do various things to bring light and, and, and assistance to those that need it. We're bringing, what is it, I think 15,000 jobs, construction jobs, which I think is going to have another 35,000 or 4,000 jobs, permanent jobs, union jobs, and the Bronx is very much in need of that. You know, we are, and I hate to say it, but out of the five boroughs, we're not looking good. And I think this can definitely help us, you know, tremendously. The construction, the new police department, the police outlet that they're going to have there, and they're going to pay for it as well, so that shows that they're looking to actually help us. Me, I'm the president of a nonprofit, Strong Enough Achievers Foundation. I know that they said that we're going to help, you know, people like myself who are in the streets and helping the community, you know, do various things to bring light and assistance to those that need it, you know? So I'm very, I'm very strongly in favor of it. Again, I've been, I worked at Legal Aid Society, so I know the ins and outs of through the crack era and things of that nature. I went to Fordham University, you know, part of an organization that was formed, helped bring the trillion dollars to the world as far as rat, called Zulu Nation. So I've been here, I've seen the ins and outs, and I think in 2025, this is a good influx that we need, a $4 billion influx. I'm biased to the Bronx, obviously, I don't really too care about Queens and all these other places, you know what I mean? Like you said, this is my foundation, and I hope that everyone that has the power to check that box, to say yes, are those that will check the box. I just want to speak on the veterans, I even do things with the veterans as well, NABET's, you know what I mean? I didn't even, another two's coming here. So as far as some of the questions he had, right, I already spoke to, what's his name, Megget?
Yeah, Kevin.
Right, I spoke to the gentleman who oversees that, that I would make, I can't make sure because I'm not the one with the money, but the people that I do know that have something to do with it, I would nudge them a little bit to try to help, you know, do whatever we can do for the veterans as well, so. Thank you all.
That's it. Your testimony. Theresa?
I'm a Peacemaker Queen in the organization, I'm a secretary. I just wanted to thank all of y'all, and I appreciate y'all opening up something, a casino in the Bronx. I was born and raised in the Bronx all my life. I don't live here now, I'm living Harlem now, but it gives me another reason to come to the Bronx, other than the fact that my father still lives here, and I'm thankful that y'all doing this. And I want to know, make sure that y'all create jobs for people that live in the Bronx. I don't have a long run-out speech, I just wanted to make sure that y'all know that we're here and we want to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. You can be, you can return to your seats. So the next four to come up are Roxanne Delgado, Dara Ilawski, Michael Maxx, and Bea Wilson. And then the next two speakers after that will be April Jones and Kamara is the last name. If there's anyone else that would like to speak that's in the room, you'll need to go do a speaker card. And again, if you want to put your hands up, if you're online, we'll be getting to you soon.
Do you have a timer anywhere?
We do here.
Can you give me a 30-second warning, please?
We'll, I'll give you a little hand, so.
Thank you. So my name is Roxanne Delgado, and I'm not too happy to be here after work, but fortunately I'm here because my, our Senator Natalia Fernandez, despite the community opposition, her district decided to proceed with the park alienation. And not, and not to do it for the better of the community, but for a casino. We should be planting trees on parkland, not putting a casino on parkland and taking away public spaces away from the community, which is one of the poorest boroughs in the entire nation. Secondly, parkland value is valued $100 million. By articles, Central Park is valued $1,000 per square foot. The average median price for a house in the Bronx is 300, over $300 per square foot. But if you look at their $100 million, that barely comes out to 121 per square foot. How is it that can be so low? It's not, just, anyone that has the basic common sense knows that it's undervalued. Secondly, crime, of course there will be crime. My, one of my members here who lives in Palm Parkway, her daughter lives in the Far Rockway for many years, and she says, ever since they put the World Resort Casino, there's been many, many instances of robbery and other crimes. And if you Google it, there was recently a disabled woman who was sexually assaulted in the casino. So for them to say no crime is ridiculous. All the applications throughout the city, the community is opposed to a casino. There's a reason why, because with casino comes a lot of problems, and the Bronx is the poorest. The last thing we need is more addiction. The Bronx has enough addiction. Anyone who knows about addiction knows that addiction can be transferred from eating to gambling to drugs, and we're adding more addictions to the Bronx, poorest people, and you know the poor people are the one that gamble because they know that they don't have the money to invest in stocks, to invest in real estate, so they hope that by gambling with their wages, their limited wages to pay the rent or to feed their children, to hit a big. But we know the house always wins, and you know there's going to be more traffic. We're losing parking space, we're looking, losing free parking here because they want less cars. They're going to bring more traffic here because they're going to try to promote more customers because they need to make more money to cover their costs. And lastly, look at what they're doing in Chicago, the IPO failed, their construction has many delays, they're not appearing to the promises they made to the Chicago Council. So let's be real here, this is political corruption, this is not for the betterment of the Bronx. I want to, who got paid, and all these people in favor, I want them to disclose how much money they receive or what promises were they made to receive? Because I got paid nothing to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Dara? Dara?
Good afternoon. My name is Dara Ilawski, and I'm the New York Staff Attorney at Save the Sound, a nonprofit environmental organization advocating for the protection and improvement of the entire Long Island Sound region. We represent thousands of members across the region, including many in the Bronx. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. I urge you to recommend disapproving the Bally's Casino and Hotel Complex at Ferry Point Park because the draft environmental impact statement fails to adequately disclose the many likely adverse environmental impacts of this project, fails to identify effective and feasible mitigation measures, or to analyze a sufficient range of alternatives, among other deficiencies. This incomplete and insufficient document cannot provide the basis for any of the land use decisions Bally's seeks from the city. City officials and the public need and deserve more information than Bally's has provided. Save the Sound's biggest concern about this project is its impact to irreplaceable waterfront parkland of Ferry Point Park. Public parkland is an extremely valuable resource in New York City, and it needs to continue to benefit the general public, not private corporations. This complex would mean the permanent loss of at least 17 acres of public parkland. Mr. Ju had alluded to 15 acres earlier today, that's not what is reflected in EIS. If there's been a change to the project, there needs to be a supplemental EIS. Save the Sound does not believe that parkland improvements or replacement parkland is available that would adequately balance the major loss within Ferry Point Park that Bally's proposes. Bally's has also failed to consider the required range of reasonable alternatives. The DEIS offers only the no-action and no-unmitigated impacts alternatives, ignoring alternatives that reduce the project's footprint, such as by removing components not germane to the project's purpose. Save the Sound objects in particular to the extension of Bally's license to operate the golf course being incorporated as part of the proposed action. The license is currently set to expire in 2035, relatively soon. This means that the community and New York City parks could begin a process to envision alternative, family-friendly uses for this precious public park space and see it begin to implement, be implemented in only 10 years' time. But the range of such potential uses will be significantly curtailed if the Bally's proposal goes through. The DEIS analysis of harms to disadvantaged communities, especially regarding air quality, is also deficient, only three pages long. It relies on a misleading air quality analysis that uses baseline data from neighborhoods far from the impacted neighborhoods, artificially making it seem as though the increase in bad air quality is negligible, when that's not necessarily true. It also continues a recurring pattern of minimizing what the loss of this park would mean to the communities that are, that rely on this park as essentially their backyard in many ways. Finally, DEIS also does not adequately explain how it will mitigate increased volumes of stormwater runoff from the project, including to impaired water bodies, Westchester Creek and the Upper East River. For those reasons and others that we will detail in written comments, Save the Sound urges you to disapprove this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Michael Maxx?
Great day. Thank you, Bronx Borough President Vanessa L. Gibson, for hosting this public hearing. I'm Michael Max Nobby, the Executive Director of the Public Service Multimedia Network of the People of the Bronx. We offer experiential learning for middle school, high school, and college students, workforce training for the public, and broadcast on multi-platform channels, programs by and about the Bronx, from the Bronx to the world. And we have, over the course of these three decades, provided media education for thousands of students, and we've built studios for you, and civic engagement is at the heart of what we do. As someone who's born and raised in the Bronx and who lives in the Bronx, I love the Bronx, our heart and our home, and I truly appreciate the presentations, the community engagement, the questions, the input, the perspectives shared here today. We know what happens to a place when there are decades of disinvestment, and that's what happened to the Bronx, oh, those decades ago. And before us now is an impressive opportunity for what will be the largest private investment in the history of the Bronx, creating local jobs with workforce development, funding for education, upgrades to parks, positive economic impact, and more. The people of the Bronx should not be left behind, and we support this compelling Bally's proposal with its robust community benefits package and more. Thank you, and keep Bronx strong.
Thank you for your testimony. Bea Wilson?
Thank you. Hello, Board, hello, everyone. My name is, my name is Benjamin Wilson. I represent the Peacemakers Organization, Guns Down Skills Up Movement. I'm Vice President of Guns Down Skills Up. I don't have a lot of anything written down and a lot of studying and knowledge of doing research on everything, I don't have that today. But I can tell you what I feel from my heart and what I know what's good for my people. I was born here in the Bronx, I grew up here in the Bronx. My children, my grand, they're born here in the Bronx. We have never had anything like this to come to us. Everything that comes here, good, we snub our nose to it, we turn away from it. I think it's about time that we start accepting some things, because, you know, this is going, if it's going to be good for me, even if it's not good for me, but if it's going to be good for my kids, my grandkids, and up the ladder, then I'm for anything that's going to bring betterment to my community, because I fight for my community every day. So I'm with you all, I'm with you wholeheartedly. That's the best I can tell you. I agree. I hope you come.
Thank you for your testimony. The four, you can be excused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
So the next two speakers that we have are April Jones and Kamara. The two of you can come up. Yeah. Okay. And those are the last two speakers that we have in person, and then we'll go to virtual after the speaker. Just one second. April, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Vanessa L. Gibson, for holding this, and I am with the project. But my concern is, so many projects come to the Bronx, promise regular guys like me, work paycheck to paycheck, all these promises, and when a project gets in, we don't see it. That's what I am here to put out there. I don't want to see another project come here and our people, my people, my regular people from 172nd, from, 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 from over here, Prospect Avenue, look at us, all right? Our children are standing on the streets, and they feel like they have no purpose. I'm looking at this project as maybe a purpose for them. You say you're offering training programs, money for housing, which is needed. I'm tired of seeing people laying on the street. I mean, we're tired of getting these hollow promises. We're hoping, and I'm with the project, that you, sir, are coming here and fulfilling all that you say that you're going to do for our community, because I don't plan on moving, and I want to see my great-grandkids have an opportunity and have a purpose and not be discouraged. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your testimony. Gwendolyn?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gwendolyn Kamara, and I serve as Executive Assistant for Dr. Minister Philip, as well as the National Chapter Director for the Arches of Justice. And today, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I understand that we may all agree in this room, but also disagree, when it comes in the care of our community can be led in a powerful outcome. Some of you may have a concern, and those concerns matter. It's because we all care about the Bronx, the future, and its people, its environment, that we are here today, and I respect that. This is not just about a casino, it is a good pay, it's a good-paying, union-backed career for the Bronx families. It's also about the $70,000 starting salaries, the local hiring, and the benefits that help families survive and thrive. Over 9,700 people pledged a card signed our real Bronx voices, and hundreds of millions is an annual economic impact. So, sorry. Hundred, $4 billion in property tax revenues, money funding schools, parks, safety, 70% current Gulf staff and Bronx residents. We are not asking for a handout, we are asking for a small investment that puts the Bronx residents first. We don't have a love, I mean, we don't have, we don't have to love the idea of the casino, but I ask you look at a full picture and think of the mothers who's been applying for jobs with no responses, the young men who dropped out of schools because there are no opportunities, the small business owners who's looking for foot traffic and visibility. The project gives all of them a chance. Whether you support or oppose this project today, I invite you to hold one truth close: the Bronx deserves better, and together we can shape this development into something that reflects the heart and the hopes of the borough. This, oh, sorry, that's a valid concern, and I agree, and we must hold the project accountable that, but let's not throw away opportunities when we can shape it and to serve us better. So, yeah. So one other point I wanted to just make clear here, I know that where you guys are building the casino at is, was, actually, that land was used as a garbage dump, and for decades, it was neglected, polluted, and ignored. And now, for the first time in years, a plan is on the table to transform it, not just into a casino, but the full economic, okay, thank you. Yes.
You can return. So we're now going to turn into the virtual. Are we ready? So the first speaker will be Lisa Soren, Lisa, and then the second speaker will be Natalia Coridori. Again, if anyone, those are the only two speakers with their hands up right now virtually, so if anyone wants to speak, please put your hand up. But Lisa, you may now begin.
Thank you, just confirming that you can hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Soren, and I proudly serve as the President of the Bronx Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to the Bronx Borough President Vanessa Gibson for hosting tonight's hearing and for ensuring that the voices of our community are heard on matters of such great significance. The Bronx is a borough that is open for business. We are proud to be home to a growing, diverse, and resilient business community, and we welcome companies from around the globe to invest, innovate, and expand in the Bronx. In that spirit, we want to express our appreciation to Bally's Corporation for the investment it has already made in Ferry Point area. Bally's has demonstrated that it is not just a company looking to build, it is a partner willing to listen and respond to the community's concerns. From workforce development conversations to early engagement with local stakeholders, Bally's has shown itself to be a serious and thoughtful investor in the Bronx. The Bronx Chamber of Commerce mission is and will always be to serve our business community. We work every day to support our members, many of them small, family-owned, and deeply rooted in their neighborhood. rooted in their neighborhoods, to help them grow, thrive, and create. That is our job. These businesses are the lifeblood of our local economy and the foundation of our neighborhoods. Should Bally's be awarded a license, the Bronx Chamber of Commerce stands ready to ensure that Bronx businesses are included in every step of the process. From contracting to procurement opportunities to long-term partnerships that foster job creation and entrepreneurship, we are committed to seeing that this project does so in a way that delivers real, substantial benefits to Bronx-based businesses. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide comments today and for your commitment to a process that places community and economic development at its core.
Thank you for your testimony. Natalia, you can unmute yourself. And begin when you're ready. Natalia Coridori?
Sorry, I couldn't find the unmute button. Sorry, guys. Sorry. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Natalia Coridori, and I'm proud to serve as the President of Pelham Bay Little League, a local nonprofit that has been serving the Bronx for over 71 years. We are the largest girls softball league in the borough, currently supporting more than 250 kids from neighborhoods all across our community. We don't just teach the game, we build confidence, character, and community. Our league provides a safe, structured, and positive environment for kids, many of whom come from hard-working families doing everything they can to give their children better opportunities. And that's exactly what we do. We give these kids a chance to grow, to lead, and to believe in themselves. But we can't do it alone. That's why I'm here today, to speak not just on behalf of Pelham Bay Little League, but for all of the grassroots organizations that are doing the work on the front lines with limited resources. We've learned that $110 million is being designated for the alienation of the New York City Parks parking lot, with that funding meant to be reinvested into Parks properties within Community Board 10. Let me be absolutely clear, Pelham Bay Little League urgently needs that investment. Our fields and indoor training facility currently have no heating, no air conditioning, and no hot water. And yet, our volunteers show up every day making the best of what we have because our kids deserve every opportunity, but they also deserve facilities that reflect the value we place on their future. And this goes beyond sports. The Bronx has the highest rate of unemployment, the highest rate of poverty, and the highest rate of people on public assistance per capita in New York City. Our kids are growing up in an environment filled with challenges, and yet, they show up ready to play, ready to learn, and ready to thrive if we just give them the chance. We need to get our kids off the street and into programs that build skills, discipline, and opportunity. We need to create real pathways to higher education and long-term success. I believe with everything in me that this kind of investment into community leagues, safe spaces, and youth programs would solve multiple social issues at once: crime, mental health, educational gaps, and generational poverty. Because when we invest in kids, we reduce the burden on criminal, on the criminal justice system. We reduce dropout rates, we break cycles, and we bring stronger, safer, we build stronger, safer communities for everyone. That's why we also fully support the proposal to dedicate 1% of gambling revenue, starting at $10 million annually, to local nonprofits. Organizations like ours have the history, the trust, and the reach to make a real immediate difference. That kind of support would be transformational, not just for our league, but for the entire Bronx. So I ask today, on behalf of the 250 kids we serve and the many more we could reach, don't leave us behind. Invest in our field, invest in our facility, invest in our kids. Because when we do that, we're not just funding a ball field, we're funding hope, opportunity, and the future of New York City. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any other speakers virtually that would like to testify? That was the last person with her hand up. If there is, you can go ahead and unmute yourself now, and I will recognize you if you want to say something. Just give it a few seconds. And anyone in the room as well, if anyone, you can put your hand up. Okay. Not seeing any. Let me just check the chat, just make sure I'm not missing anything. Natalia, okay. So just to wrap up that, we had 20 speakers, 17 in support, two opposed, and one undecided. Just to make that note at this time. We're now going to go back to the question and answer with the Bronx Borough President.
All right. Thank you, thank you. Thank you again, everyone, for being here. And I know that many of our participants had time commitments and time constraints. So that's why I wanted to just allow that process for the public to testify first before we ask any questions, my team and I. It's super important for me, as your Borough President, to hear every single view and perspective, as well as that of many that may not have been able to join us in person and virtually. We also have gotten feedback from local Community Board 10. And so we're working with everyone. Everything is on the table, and we really do appreciate everyone's participation. So I have a lot of questions, but a lot of them were already answered. But let me just start, and thank you again to the Bally's team. And Mr. Kim, I hope you get your voice back. It is so hard to do this work without having a voice, let me tell you. I have been there, so we are praying for you. But thank you to the Bally's team, Chris, and Mr. Kim, as well as the team. Thank you for joining us. So a couple of questions. Many, everyone has pretty much talked very consistently about local hiring targets and the approaches that this proposal is taking to recognize both the temporary jobs as well as permanent jobs, the fact that there will be a project labor agreement, there are active discussions with labor unions. I think it's all a part of what many have talked about. But of course, I do want to recognize the vulnerable populations that are often left out of the traditional job market, and many have alluded, and I want to recognize, of course, our veterans, from NAB vets to Metro Vets and Veterans Action Now. We have a Veterans Advisory Council. We do a lot of work across the borough with veterans. We've been very targeted in our approach with our Future Forward Initiative here at Borough Hall to really identify those populations across our borough that have the highest rates of unemployment: veterans, people with disabilities, formerly incarcerated men and women, African-American men, and the LGBTQIA+ community. And so I wonder, in this conversation to the Bally's team, are there any protected classes, which I say everyone is protected, but are there any specifics that we are thinking about and considering when it comes to veterans, any set of sites, any additional programs that we could say to our veterans that are returning from service, that are also returning to the workforce? They have the skills, they have the training, they have the expertise and willingness to work. Is that something that we could consider? Is it already on the table? Can you share and elaborate a little bit for us?
Borough President, thank you very much. We share your concern, obviously, for those who serve our country. For what it's worth, the general manager of our largest property is a veteran, and it's something that's near and dear to our hearts. What we presented here in terms of our community benefits package is just really almost a wave tops. The reality is, as this process goes forward, we will commit to a binding host-community agreement. And in that agreement, beyond sort of the larger categories, specific requests such as, hey, let's have a recruiting effort for veterans. That's, we can absolutely build that into the program.
I think just touching upon a little bit more than just the veterans, you know, local hiring targets. That's one thing that we've talked about with pretty much every organization that we've met with. We've obviously focused on Bronx organizations. Just based on the, you know, the simple kind of math of the 4,000 or so employees, I would estimate somewhere in the 60 to 70%, 60 to 70% of our employees will be Bronx residents. And even narrowing that further to our local community, CB 10, the neighbors in 9 and 11, we think north of 50%. You know, from a diversity and protected class standpoint, we obviously don't discriminate on hiring, and we believe that our employees should be highly representative of the community that we operate in today. Utilizing the golf course as an example, we've been there almost two years now, we have north of 65% of our employees are Bronx residents, and north of 65% are diverse.
So in the ongoing conversations around community benefits and what the CBA looks like, I definitely encourage the Bally's team. We've identified, and we know many of the veterans organizations, many of the CBOs, a lot of them already have a presence on the ground. They already have a working relationship with many of the populations we're talking about. So I definitely recommend that you work with them. It will be great if those conversations could begin if they're not already. And then certainly, you have a meeting space now at the golf course, and I think it would be great if you could host meetings. Roundtables are great, meeting greets are great. And then coupled with the local hiring targets is something that many people talked about, and that is the workforce training. So one thing that we have recognized in our tenure as Borough Presidents, when we often have developers and others that come to us about investing in the Bronx, they sometimes bring their own contained staff with them. And so we've been very clear that the talent is already in our borough, and if it's not where it needs to be in terms of standards, then help us get to where we need to be. So workforce training is super important to everything we do. So I do want to make sure that you're already working with some of our, what I call them, credible messengers because they have the consistency, they're already on the ground, and they also have the programs and the tailored to where we need to be. They just need support. They need the financial dollars, they need, you know, obviously, as much as can be done. So the establishment of workforce development programs, organizations, and training, is that something that's already considered and all the partners already identified?
Not all the partners are identified, but absolutely we'll do, we will be doing that. So one of the benefits of being one of the largest gaming companies in America is that we have 19 casinos where we're operating. We can show you examples of the things we do. So just to go back to the commitments we made to Chicago to create a workforce as representative, those guidelines are in our host-community agreement. And in the, in the temporary casino, we've well exceeded all of those guidelines. So we can show you how we absolutely commit to following through with our promises. When it comes to workforce development in Rhode Island, our neighbor is actually the Rhode Island Community College, and we already work with them closely to create a training program that actually teaches people to be casino employees. I believe it's six or nine months long, and graduates are fast-tracked to getting jobs at the casino. So we actually, we would be more than happy to work a program as, such as that with some of the local schools here, the community colleges, the technical schools. That is a pathway that we're absolutely committed to, and we already do it today.
Okay, great. I wanted to touch quickly on small businesses. A part of our work is to continue to support our thriving business corridor. Let me shout out East Tremont. The Throgsnack Business Improvement District has done great, great work just amplifying the voices of small businesses, and I also acknowledge the entrepreneurs. You've worked closely with the bid leadership, with Mr. Bobby Jean and his team. There's been a lot of ongoing conversations. So I do want to make sure that in the CBA, there is a substantial portion that recognizes the thriving commercial corridor we have today. But obviously, it wouldn't be me if I didn't acknowledge that small businesses, as much as we know, they're the fabric of our borough, they are the economic engines that allow us to strive and thrive, but many are facing a lot of challenges. During the pandemic, many did not get access to PPP loans. It was a struggle. Our BXDC team works, we've identified a lot of loan opportunities, grant opportunities. We work with state agencies. We have a $20 million grant coming through the DRI initiative to the Greater Morris Park community coming, and so that's great. But we still need to make sure that there are no unintended consequences that could negatively impact the business sector in Throgsnack, specifically East Tremont. And so is there anything that we're doing, conversations, considerations? Because we obviously, if, you know, successful, the casino and the surrounding parts of the project should help the Throgsnack East Tremont corridor grow and not diminish. But of course, there will always be fear because if you are providing complementary restaurants, retail, similar products, produce, et cetera, that's already being offered on Tremont, that's going to take away from that corridor. So have you thought about that? Has that been a conversation that you've been a part of? And what are some of the measures that you're looking to provide that can really help support the Throgsnack commercial corridor?
I'll take that, and Sue can maybe supplement. I guess first and foremost, I think the small businesses, especially in Throgsnack, they're our neighbors. They're, you know, first and foremost, one of our most important neighbors. With that being said, we, they were one of the first neighbors that we actually met with when we proposed the project. We have received, you know, letters of support. I think there's 40-plus organizations that are part of the bid that are supportive of the project. We partnered with them on rolling out the Bally bus, which has now been active for north of, since September of 2023, so call it, I don't know, 18, 19 months. On average, that bus runs five days a week, about 10 hours a day, and we have north of 1,000 to 1,400 riders, depending on the time of year, obviously, you know, you're peaking in the summer. With that being said, we would plan to continue that and expand that as we know that that really benefits a lot of those businesses along that corridor. Secondly, you know, I think some of those businesses may actually fit into our day-to-day operations whereby they may benefit from being a service provider. If it's, you know, insurance organizations, payroll, et cetera, those are the types of businesses that may be able to work with us on a day-to-day basis where they have a direct contract with us. And then over and above that, you know, perhaps the most impactful and widespread would be our Bally Rewards program. So whereby, if you're familiar with casino marketing, there's a few different buckets, but one of them that we heavily utilize is gift card giveaways. And we can go to, you know, Starbucks or Target, which are right up the street, you know, at the corner of Lafayette and Ring Road, and buy $100,000 worth of gift cards. That's a blip on the radar for an international company, a publicly traded company. Us buying thousands of dollars of gift cards in that improvement district, as an example, that's far more impactful. It's exponentially impactful, and it keeps the dollars local. It also keeps our customers local. So we think those are just a few examples of how we would plan to support our local businesses.
Okay. Great. And then as those conversations continue, I definitely encourage you to develop some sort of a directory, resource guide, for the Bally's team so that you know who's where. The bid represents many of the businesses along East Tremont, but not every single business. There are some new, fairly new, older, legacy, generational, a combination of all. So I want to make sure that you know who's there and what services they do provide. So if you talk about supplies, equipment, retail, things of that nature, that can help support your tenancy at the project. Quickly, I wanted to ask about, and a few of the panelists talked about it, but we can't mention this project without talking about it being the site of a former landfill. And as many of my environmentalists would remind me, mitigation efforts to deal with hazmat and potential environmental hazards are important. Stormwater management challenges that we face, both during construction as well as during operation. So I want to understand a little bit more of what steps we take to address landfill gas, stormwater management challenges, and then also, we are aware, people have brought up vapor barriers and some of the mitigation systems that have already been mentioned. So could you spend a little bit on that? And I'm certain that in your work with DEC and DEP at the state and city level, they have also outlined some of their guidelines and priorities as well.
I'm going to hand it off to the experts. I'm 14 Borough President, I have to run out.
Sure.
So, but thank you so much for hosting this. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. And I'm worthless right now anyway, so I can't even speak, so, but thank you. I appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. So Satya and Max, just make sure you introduce yourselves.
Sure. Yeah, so Borough President, I'm going to let the experts. So Satya and Max, to my left, Satya's focus is transportation and infrastructure engineering, and then Max is focused on our environmental impact statement. So I'm going to, I'm going to let Max maybe cover the comments on hazmat, stormwater, vapor barriers, and how do we construct safely, based on the history of the site.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Borough President Gibson, for hosting us at this event. As Chris said, I'm Max number young. I work at Langen Engineering, and I am preparing with others the environmental impact statement for the project. So as I understand, your first question was about hazardous materials. The site is over a former landfill that was operated by the city's Department of Sanitation. The landfill was closed and... The landfill was closed and redeveloped as a golf course, which opened in 2015. Prior to opening, there was a slew of approvals that needed to happen from the state level with the Department of Environmental Conservation that included importing clean fill as a barrier. It included installing a landfill gas monitoring system that allows, allows the state and the city to monitor what is coming out of the landfill. And there's annual reports that are published publicly about what is coming out of the landfill. As part of this project, when Bally's takes over the land, they will also be responsible for reporting and maintaining the existing landfill gas monitoring system on their site. So that is a benefit, that is taking away responsibilities from the New York City Parks Department and putting it in Bally's hands as a requirement and a burden for them to take on, allowing more funding for parks to free up. During, yeah, so when this is being built, there will be a community air monitoring plan installed, which is called a camp, that will be part of the approvals from the Department of Environmental Conservation. The plan will include installing air monitors around the barrier of the site and will monitor in real time pollutants that are coming out of the landfill, including particulate matter, carbon dioxide, I believe, sorry, nitrogen dioxide, and other pollutants. If there's an exceedance above the applicable criteria, our environmental engineer will get an alert in real time, and construction will be stopped until the exceedance can be investigated and remediated, and then construction can begin again. All activities that involve ground disturbance will involve a oversight of a environmental engineer. Any material that is excavated from the landfill will be undergone waste classification and then sent onward to appropriate disposal facilities during the transportation that will comply with the state's underlying regulations for moving landfill material or hazardous material. So the project will also, as you said, incorporate a vapor barrier. The foundation will also serve as a barrier between the occupants of the building and the landfill contaminants below. During construction, you had a question about stormwater, both during construction and completion. The city and the state both require a stormwater pollution prevention plan, or SWIP, to be approved prior to construction. Both those would be reviewed and approved, both at the state and city level, for stormwater concerns. And during the operational phase, the SWIP will also provide rules that will govern how Bally's will have to operate and maintain stormwater. In terms of stormwater, the existing system, I believe, was installed in the mid, the early to mid nineteen nineties, not under the current regulations. So when Bally's connects to the existing stormwater infrastructure, they will have to meet current standards. So we anticipate that stormwater coming from the Bally's site will actually improve over existing conditions. They'll also be required to comply with the Unified Stormwater Rule, which has retention requirements that allow settling of particulate matter in the water, reduces the amount of, or the volume being discharged to the system, so reserves capacity within the system, the city system. So those are just some of the measures that are being undertaken. And all this has been reviewed in coordination with New York City's Department of Environmental Protection and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, among others.
Okay. So with the requirements from D E C and D E P, is there any component that allows the community board, the elected officials, to also be notified? You have to submit certain reports on your findings, ongoing work to the state and city agency. Is there anything that will allow you to also share that with some of the key stakeholders?
Sure. During construction, we'll be required to submit, I guess, regular reporting to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. All that goes in as public record and is available through the Department of Environmental Conservation.
Okay, and probably goes on the website. Okay, so keeping in mind the same question I also wanted to ask specifically, many, many, many residents and businesses will always ask about noise and pollution mitigation. How can we make sure? Because the E I S projects several thousand daily visitors. And certainly during construction, noise pollution will have an impact on the surrounding community, both residential and commercial. So the noise and pollution mitigation measures were outlined in the E I S. Can you just expand a little bit on that to make sure that we are looking to minimize any disruption to local residents as well as visitors and others to the commercial corridor?
Max, if you could also just cover a lot of work that's been done since D E I S. I know there's a lot.
So I'll cover first what the D E I S said, and then I'll talk a little bit about the work we've been doing between draft and final E I S, so there'll be a distinction there. So the air quality and noise analyses are based on a set of largely conservative assumptions that the traffic analysis made. And I'll let our traffic engineer speak to that later if it comes up. But essentially, we are projecting a very large volume of traffic as a worst-case condition for the environmental impact statement. Is it necessarily going to materially, material to that volume of traffic? We're projecting no, because we're providing a worst-case condition for the E I S. So the environmental impact statement did look at noise and air quality. So for noise, we are, the draft environmental impact statement says there would be a significant adverse noise impact to Ring Road as a result of increased traffic. Sorry, there will be significant adverse noise impact to Ferry Point Park because of traffic on Ring Road. We did a preliminary set of modeling that projected up to a nine-decibel increase in noise levels at the immediate edge of Ring Road and in the park. Obviously, that would be less the further you go from the vehicular traffic. In terms of noise, we are going to comply with mechanical code in terms of new noise sources at the facility. During construction, there will be a noise increase on the golf course. I think it's, it doesn't exceed a level of fifteen decibels, if I recall correctly, which is typical for, for construction in New York City. So I don't think there's anything abnormal there. The golfers, I guess the golf course is really the main receptor of concern there. And golfers move throughout the golf course as they play golf. So as they get closer to the facility, they may experience, you know, an increase in noise for a short period of time. And then they move on to the next area of the golf course or finish their round of golf. And so I guess the noise exposure during construction is temporary for golfers and would not be experienced across the whole golf course. So between draft and final E I S, we are taking a more detailed modeling approach to the traffic noise. This, the modeling approach we're doing now incorporates the spatial relationship of different noise sources and how noise disperses over, over space. And also accounts for traffic speeds, which our initial model did not. The, our initial findings are that the increase in noise levels will be below impact thresholds, which is below three-decibel increase, during the operational and construction phases on Ferry Point Park. So that is to be still reviewed and confirmed by Department of Environmental Protection. But we think that we have a probable improvement to those conditions.
Borough President, if I can add, I know, I know Max had mentioned that noise, you know, could be heard on various locations along the golf course. I personally have experienced, you know, with oversight and spending a lot of time there, you can already hear noise coming from the highway and along the hutch. I don't think we would anticipate, I don't know how you measure three to six decibels, but I don't anticipate that being a significant noticeable impact and not for a period of time. Golfers typically will spend two or three minutes in one spot and then go to the next shot, so.
Okay, great, thank you. In addition, staying in the same vein, I'm going quickly to transit. We have a M T A bus service in and around the area. So I'm wondering, with the projected increase in visitors, many of whom will drive, we understand that, but we also know there will be commuters that will travel locally beyond the shuttle service that's currently existing along the East Tremont corridor. Have there been any discussions with the M T A, New York City Transit, about adding to existing bus routes? Or anything to accommodate the increased travel that many may use the local bus service? And then I have to talk about our ferry service at Ferry Point Park that we love. It's an important asset for many of our ferry riders, N Y C Ferry Service, which is run by E D C. We're always talking about how we love ferry service, but we know that the station itself, the docking facility, needs a T L C. So I'm wondering, in these conversations, are we looking at additional bus service as well as upgrades to the Ferry Point service on the ferry, ferry line?
So I'll start, and then I'll ask Satya to maybe supplement with more of the details. So I guess first and foremost, we are committed to continuing the shuttle service and potentially expanding. I think we do need to better, you know, analyze and understand, and this will be, you know, it'll be fluid over time, where our customers' employees are coming from. With that being said, I know, you know, from everything I've seen in the E I S, there are very conservative transportation volume assumptions and very conservative usages of both public transit, the M T A, and the ferry. I would estimate, you know, for our employees, at least fifty percent of our employees would probably take some form of public transit. We've got commitment from M T A today for two bus stops. We don't know the exact line. I think they want to wait until we see how far along this project gets. And if awarded, we will have plenty of time to plan that out, you know, with thirty-plus months of construction. But those two bus stops would be, one in the current E D C parking lot or along that roadway. And that roadway's been designed to handle that. And then the second would be within our, within our site, along a specific drop-off designed area. With that being said, you know, enhancing the usage of public transit in that area would be key. We know today there's already parking shortages. We've talked about utilizing our forty-six-hundred, I think we have forty-six-hundred and sixty spaces in our project. There's real opportunity for both park users and public transit users. You know, assuming we're successful, we can put those number of spaces in. So I would say a lot of opportunity, and I'll let Satya maybe potentially add a little bit.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here on behalf of the project. I just want to add to what Chris said. There have been discussions with the M T A. There's a commitment from them for two bus stops, one inside the site and one on Ring Road. And that is mainly for the park users. And the idea is to connect it with the ferry terminal uses as well. We did have conversations with E D C, who mentioned to us that the ferry service has been very good. It's liked a lot by the users, and in the short term, they are not planning any improvements. However, once the project does go into the future, they are definitely open to considering modifications to frequency and service. They had basically said they would actively coordinate and participate in the project to do that. Just want to add to what Chris said. There is a commitment from Bally's to do a traffic monitoring program, just to keep an eye on as traffic actually starts coming onto the site, not just for vehicle, even the users of transit and such, to make sure that if there are any improvements needed, the data will be collected in. There'll be close coordination with City D O D and E D C on that particular item with the M T A.
Okay, great. So I talked about bus service, ferry service. So I want to acknowledge that in this proposal, there is a design for a brand-new overpass. And people will always be concerned about the spill-over effect and the local traffic and the impact that it will have on local streets. And so I just want to, again, clarify, what is the impact that you believe from the existing overpass today to the new overpass? How much additional traffic will that overpass contain and lessen the burden that it would have an impact on the local streets? Because people obviously are concerned, residents, homeowners, about school dismissal times, school buses, and just everyone that's on our streets that we share. And so when we're adding a lot more cars, it's going to cause, you know, a significant impact on the local traffic in the local community. So I do want to make sure that we try to identify what those numbers look like as projected for this proposal.
Those numbers have been identified in terms of working with D O D. So D O D helped us refine the assumptions that Max mentioned as a reasonable worst case for the E I S, which is a conservative way of determining how much traffic in the future could arrive. And the overpass that is being proposed, the new overpass, would primarily take a lot of the traffic off the two signalized intersections on Lafayette, the existing signal. And the goal of doing that was to minimize the impacts of the local streets and to contain the traffic largely on the highway. The idea is the users of the new overpass would be the visitors to the facility or the people leaving the facility. And some of the park users today would, as they probably know, as you leave, you may have to go make two turns with the signalized intersections on Lafayette to get back to the Whitestone Bridge. They don't have to do that with the overpass. So there will be a benefit to that by, in terms of alleviating that traffic. And that was primarily designed with the idea of taking the pressure off the two signalized intersections, the local streets. In terms of impacts to school buses and such, the peaking characteristics of traffic coming to the site tend to be outside school hours, probably later in the day. So there will be a separation of when the traffic peaks relative to when the school buses are operating. So some of that concern would be alleviated that way.
Very good, thank you. Are you able to speak to any of the sustainability measures that we are looking to achieve? Obviously, gold, lead standards are the very best, very top. And we appreciate that compared to silver, lead. How can we understand that a little bit more, just in terms of the impact it's going to have on energy efficiency, waste management? These are all things environmentalists teach me when I talk about projects of this scale, that are really important. I mean, they're not the most attractive conversations, but when you think about the long-term impact, if we can breathe cleaner air, if we can reduce our asthma numbers in the Bronx, since we have some of the highest rates among children, obesity numbers, and many other health disparities, all of that is associated with our air quality, with noise mitigation, with all the things that we're talking about. And so it's important, and I know my environmentalists would appreciate that. So please expand for us a little bit on the gold lead standards that we're looking to achieve.
Sure. So my, my, our environmentalists on our team also teach me, so we're in the same boat there. With that being said, we did, we did commit to a lead gold standard. There's an abundance of examples that you can point to. To be frank, you know, we're very obviously early in the conceptual design stage. Just looking at the building, though, you can see that there's stormwater treatment, green roofs, we would include electric vehicle charging, electronic bikes. Would there be ability to follow various recycling guidelines? You know, I learn pretty much every day something new about this project as we're continuing to evolve. You know, we will be required to follow bird-friendly glass guidelines within the, I think it's within the city, with city pass guidelines in 2020, is my understanding. You know, working through, as we work with our mechanical and engineering folks, or M E P, we'll be working on, you know, energy conservation initiatives. I will also note that in the conversations with New York City Parks and their design team on the new clubhouse, this is a very strong focus of theirs, not only just for the new clubhouse, but also for the future golf operations. One example there is utilized, that's, you know, something that is very easy for us to do, is utilizing electronic golf carts as opposed to gas-powered. So all considerations that are either in our proposal or will be expanded on as this proposal evolves and develops.
Thank you. I do appreciate that the Bally's team is thinking outside the box. And for us, it's really about raising the standards. I expect any organization, any entity that proposes a project this magnitude to always go above and beyond the minimum, right? The minimum is the floor, but we should always aim for the ceiling because the Bronx deserves that a lot more. And yes, it is an investment, but it's an investment that's worth it because the residents, the families, the children, everyone in the Bronx really is absolutely worth it. So I do appreciate that when it comes to energy efficiency, when it comes to measures that will allow our projects to be sustainable for the that will allow our projects to be sustainable for the next 50 years, right? We're doing everything in the long term, and it's about the current population, but also, someone mentioned, grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Yes, that matters. Big priority, and I think all of you talked about that, have to recognize public safety. It is the topic that everyone talks about, no matter where you live, how much is in your bank account, your zip code, everything. Everyone has an expectation to be safe. And I believe that many people are concerned just about the scale of the project, the volume of people that are coming when it comes to the local precinct. And we have the best commanding officers in our 12 precincts, and the 405 is the largest precinct we represent because it covers the BronxNet, Country Club, Pelham Bay, Pelham Bay Park, City Island, Orchard Beach, and Co-op City, and many other smaller communities. So it is a precinct that gets a lot of support, but not when it comes to resources all the time. So I know many residents have told you about the substation, which you've confirmed and agreed to. But then I think a part of the CBA also was supporting the NYPD. So the substation is great. You're going to hire a security team, which is also important. But I also would like there to be a recognition of just supporting the NYPD. Having a synergy with the 405, with the community affairs officers is something that we absolutely appreciate, but it comes down to resources. This is a big project. It's going to require a lot of manpower, and we want to make sure that in this plan, you recognize that. So can you expand a little bit on the public safety priorities?
A hundred percent. So I guess, taking a step back, just for folks that may be, you know, learning about this, you know, is their first time or maybe second or third time hearing it and listening in, you know, a police substation is not something that we personally, we as a company envision actually needing for our operation. We're not building this to benefit Bally's. And what do I mean by that? What I mean is, you know, as Chairman Sue Kim mentioned, you know, and I'll say it frankly, probably one of the worst places you could commit a crime is within a casino where every employee is trained, if you see something, say something. You know, the level of surveillance and technology between thousands of cameras that can zoom in on the serial number on a dollar bill, license plate readers, concealed weapons detection. I don't think New York State actually allows it yet, but facial recognition software, right? The level of technology today, if you can utilize it the right way, you can really create a safe environment. And we hear, you know, we understand that, you know, the halo effect is really more of the concern, and that's where this police substation and us paying for it originally with one, paid onsite within our facility. That's still our commitment, and now we're going over and above as we've had further conversations with various community organizations and groups whereby, you know, folks said, you don't need it on the site, put it somewhere else. So we've committed in our community benefits agreement to expand that into more than one, multiple. So, you know, the math in there is two, but if there's more than two places, then we should have that conversation. I think one thing that is really important to note about the project and something that's shouldn't be lost in this conversation, I feel like there is a little bit of a perception that we're, our project will be a drain on public resources. I would actually argue the exact opposite. Today, the 15.7 acres, which is the development site, not including the Ring Road, that today is parkland. Today, that parkland generates $0 of any sort of property taxes that go to the city that ultimately help offset public services. In the future, our forecasts are somewhere between $30 and $50 million, and we obviously can't control what the taxing regime looks like by the time we're constructed. But we'd be adding $30 to $50 million into the city's coffers to help subsidize certain public services. I don't see us utilizing $30 to $50 million worth of services, especially if we're already supplementing some of the police on our own, out of pocket, separate from that. But I think that's worth noting and something that's not really been a focus of conversations.
Okay, thank you. So I know we have to wrap up. We are in a courthouse. I respect that, you know, we have to make sure that we are out by a certain time. So I tried to ask a lot of questions just based on the feedback that we've received from the local community board, stakeholders and others, but I think environmental, sustainability, transportation, mass transit, public safety, it really matters, the community benefits agreements, as well as the local hiring targets and populations that I often say are left behind. I appreciate it and really want to thank you for not only answering the questions but understanding that this is a multilayered process. Working with city, state agencies, not always easy. Everyone has individual conversations, but collectively, the goals are the same, to make any project of this magnitude the most balanced and responsible project that we can see, one that recognizes what we have today, the character of our neighborhoods, the thriving commercial corridors that we represent, and how we put all of that together and come up with the best plan, right? And so I do acknowledge that on this journey, there's been a lot of conversations with my office, with elected officials, with stakeholders. We've recommended many organizations that we encourage you to talk to, and you have. And then, you know, this conversation will continue. We're still a couple of months away before any, you know, official decisions are made. But for today and the matter at hand with the land use application, with the disposition of parkland, really appreciate your time and definitely encourage you to continue having those conversations. As I mentioned, the resource guides and just coming up with a real directory of who all of the entities and different organizations that are either in the BronxNet or the broader community is really important because I think everyone wants to be heard. And the reality is, is a project like this will have a real impact on not just the Bronx but with the borough. And as Borough President, I have to look at across the borough because everything we do is about economic development and growth and opportunities in the Bronx. I am sick of always being last in everything, and it is far time that the Bronx can lead in really amazing things and really looking creatively and thinking outside the box. I'm so glad that Natalia testified from the Pelham Bay Little League. This Little League, among others, is so amazing. And I always want to make sure you don't forget the Little Leagues. We have the BronxNet Little League, the Little League season has started, and a lot of them are struggling. They're struggling with enrollment. A lot of it is volunteer-based. Parents are volunteering time, but the facilities are outdated. And if we are to have the next baseball players that emerge from our borough, we need modernized facilities. And so I'm glad that Natalia and her colleagues are working together and really making sure they're a part of this conversation because it does matter. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for your presence, and we look forward to the conversation continuing. And now I'll turn it back over to Jitvan as we close out today's hearing. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Just one more minute for a couple wrap-ups. Thank you, Borough President, and the applicant team. For anyone that wishes to submit written testimony, please submit it to publictestimony@bronxbp.nyc.gov. That information is also on the website under the Planning and Development. Written testimony will always be accepted, but only testimony received by this Tuesday, April 15th, will be considered for the Borough President's recommendation. Before we go, I want to recognize and thank the team that worked to ensure this public hearing went smoothly, including Gio Chaco, Robert Maraglia, the Planning and Development Team, Administrative Judge Joseph Capella, and the Bronx Supreme Court for letting us use this beautiful venue again, the court officers for your support, and BronxNet, as well as the applicant team. This concludes the public testimony portion of the Borough President Gibson's public hearing, which concludes at 6:34 PM. I want to thank you all for your participation in this public hearing and hope you all have a great rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you.